Can we please, you may stand in for one second. We lost a valuable friend in our community, Mr. Bill Brunner, who is a big advocate, no, he, we didn't lose Bill, we lost his wife. Bill is a big advocate of the community for education. His wife of 56 years passed away last week. And their three girls went through the Edison School System and ended at Edison High School. So if we could have a moment of silence for Mrs. Brunner, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Dan, roll call, please. Mr. Eriko?
Here.
Mrs. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Pang?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Budowski?
Here.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Here.
All present. Thank you. The Open Publics Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public's bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and to Star Ledger on September 22, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay. First up, I would like to say it's great to see everyone in person. This is the first time since last March, I guess, that everyone, all board members here are in person. So thank you very much. And thank you for audience coming in, being masked and somewhat socially distanced when you can. So we are waiting upon our guest of honor. She said she'd be here in about three minutes. So I know Dr. Shalopp is out there somewhere. So we're just gonna sit tight for a couple of minutes. Oh, we're all good, okay. Here comes Dr. Shalopp. Dr. Shalopp is the principal at J.P. Stevens High School. So now I'd like to introduce Dr. Shalopp.
So if I could have another minute, but I have to get started. Ms. Evelyn just arrived and she's actually walking into the building as we speak. But at 100 years old, I'd like to give her a little bit of time to get down here so we can say our nice words about her. But in the meantime, while we're waiting for Ms. Evelyn to show up, I'd like to take this time to thank Dr. Bregan and Mr. Eriko and the board for giving us this opportunity to recognize the wonderful woman that Ms. Evelyn is and how she is so important to J.P. Stevens. So if I could just have a moment?
Sure.
Because I'd like to hear, I'd like her to hear this.
Absolutely. Would you like, I, no, no problem.
Sanitize it.
Can I get a temperature check?
Do you want to wait or I can, I can start? She's, Judy just said five minutes.
No, I mean, we'll just wait.
Yeah, she needs to hear it.
Let's wait.
Do we want to stop the video and come back in a couple of minutes? All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Hey, you know what, maybe we could pull the table back a little? There you go.
Front row.
Right up there. Mr. Dr. Shalopp, thank you.
Here we go.
Okay. After you.
You can go down there. Right there. Perfect seat, right there.
Oh Grandma, look at that!
There you go. She is, she is. Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
So again, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bregan. Thank you, Mr. Eriko. Thank you, board members, for allowing us to celebrate Evelyn and the wonderful woman that she is here today in this board meeting. Evelyn Kiss is woven into the fabric of J.P. Stevens. She has worked at J.P. Stevens for over 55 years. She has been there since 1965, when the school opened, and we had our own, very own food services. And she continued at J.P. when Chartwell's took over. She loves children so much. She is amazing. She is inspiring. She, the children and staff at J.P. always look forward to seeing Ms. Evelyn every day. She has wit, she's cheerful, and she loves to have fun with her coworkers. She has a wonderful sense of humor. The saying goes, "You never work a day in your life if you do what you love." Ms. Evelyn loves what she does. She loves the children that she works with, and I would argue that she's never worked a day in the 55 years that she's been at J.P. Stevens. She's a wonderful person because of that love that she has for our children. Ms. Evelyn is an icon at J.P. and a wonderful role model for each and every one of us. To all of us at J.P., the cafeteria will always be known to us as Ms. Evelyn's Cafeteria. We love her so much. So today, we did a little drive-by parade at her house, at her home, and we had a wonderful time and we spent time with Ms. Evelyn. The Fanwood Police, the fire company, and the EMS joined us, and it was a wonderful day. And the mayor was supposed to be there and asked that I read this proclamation to the Board of Education on behalf of Ms. Evelyn. "The Borough of Fanwood, Mayor's Proclamation, Evelyn Kiss Day, October 15, 2020. Whereas Evelyn Kiss has been a resident of Fanwood for 50 years, where she lives with her granddaughter Johanna Glasso and her great-granddaughter Kimberly Nicole Glasso, a Glasso, who claim she is the Spitfire and loves to laugh and joke around, and we know that at J.P. Whereas Evelyn will be 100 years young on October 15, 2020, and whereas Evelyn has raised four children, one granddaughter and two great-grandchildren, and has two sons still living in Florida, Richard and Raymond Kiss, and, this is a very important one, whereas Evelyn still works at J.P. Stevens High School in Edison, New Jersey, in the cafeteria and is loved by all the faculty, students, and Board of Education. And whereas Evelyn has a deep love for the New York Yankees and Disney World in Florida. And whereas every day she wakes up and puts on a full face of makeup and is the best caregiver to her beloved dog, Mandy. Evelyn enjoys shopping at her favorite store, Walmart. And now, therefore, I, Colleen Mayer, Mayor of Fanwood, do hereby proclaim, October 15, 2020, as Evelyn Kiss Day in the Borough of Fanwood, and ask all who know her to mark our good fortune at having this extraordinary woman as a resident of our community." So, Ms. Evelyn, happy birthday. We are so fortunate to have you in our lives. We do have one little video that we put together at J.P. that we are going to share with you. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Eriko. Evelyn Kiss is a wonderful person who has cared for the students in the J.P. Stevens community for more than 55 years. She has been a cafeteria worker in the Edison School District since J.P. Stevens opened its doors back in 1965 and continued when Chartwell's took over the food services. Over the years, children and school staff alike have looked forward to seeing Evelyn on a daily basis. She always greets students and staff with a smile and has made the difference in the lives of so many people. Her wit, cheerful demeanor, and love of our students is truly inspiring. She has become an icon at J.P. and a wonderful role model for each and every one of us. Today, Evelyn is 100 years young. Happy birthday, Evelyn.
Many wishes for a happy 100th birthday, good health, and happiness.
Congratulations on your 100th birthday, Evelyn. We are so thankful that you've been part of our community since 1965.
Happy 100th birthday, Evelyn.
I just want to wish you a happy birthday. Wow, I can't believe you're 100 years old, young.
I'd like to wish you a very happy and special 100th birthday.
I want to wish you a wonderful 100th birthday.
Happy birthday, Evelyn, from the School Counseling Department.
Happy 100th birthday, Evelyn, and many more.
I really do wish you the best, wish you a great 100th birthday, and hopefully many more to come.
Have a very special day, Evelyn. Happy birthday.
Hi Evelyn, happy 100th birthday. I hope you're having a wonderful day and I can't wait to see you when we get back to J.P.
Happy 100th birthday.
Hi, Ms. Evelyn, wishing you a happy 100th birthday.
I just wanted to wish you a very happy 100th birthday.
Happy 100th birthday, Ms. Evelyn!
Happy birthday, Miss.
Happy birthday, Ms. Evelyn. I hope you have a wonderful birthday and I miss having coffee with you.
Happy birthday, Evelyn.
Just wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Hi Evelyn, I just wanted to wish you the best birthday ever. Happy 100 years, that's so wonderful.
I hope you enjoy your day, though. You deserve all of the happiness in the world. Happy birthday, Evelyn.
Happy 100th birthday, Evelyn.
Happy birthday, Evelyn, happy 100th birthday. I hope that you are celebrating and being celebrated as we here at J.P. celebrate you.
Hi Evelyn, I wish we could see you in person to wish you a happy 100-year-old birthday. This is an incredible milestone for a very incredible person.
I wish you all the best in the future years. God bless you and your family.
Happy 100th birthday, Evelyn. I miss seeing you at J.P. and I hope you're doing well.
Happy birthday, Evelyn. Congratulations on being a centenarian.
We hope you have a happy list, 100th birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy 100th birthday, Evelyn! What inspires you? Life inspires me. Getting up in the morning and going to work, being around people that you like and that are nice people. And all my life, I've been working around nice people. And that's what inspires me.
Ms. Evelyn, on behalf of the school administration, Dr. Bregan, all the administrators, everyone on the Board of Education, I would like to wish you a happy 100th birthday and thank you for serving our students and staff for 55 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words?
You want to say a few words, or not? I don't know what to say.
All right.
She's flustered.
If you can, yeah, if you can bring it up. It's all taped down now, I think.
I just wish to thank everybody because all the years that I have worked in J.P. Stevens High School, which is many, many years, has been the best, best years of my life. I love the students, always have loved them, and that is why I enjoy working with them and the school. And I feel they're the best students in the world. Thank you.
Well, again, on behalf of the board, everyone on the board and all the administrators, again, we'd like to thank you. And we're gonna take a five-minute break so Ms. Evelyn can make her way out. Meeting is called to order again? Okay, at this time, we're gonna have public hearing and comments on number five on the resolution, of this resolution only, which is the superintendent's contract. Only on that topic, we're gonna have public comments. So at this time, if anyone wants to speak, now is the time to raise your hand. You get six minutes. Yes, sir. First hand up. Please remember, everyone, before you start, we have six minutes and then we have to ask you to take your seat. Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to state that-
Name and address, please, I'm sorry.
My name is Bennett Tab, 20 Redwood Avenue, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Set, my son has special needs as in the school system. For seven years, we couldn't get anything done because Richard O'Malley and Richard Conklin sat there and blocked everything we did at every turn. We had to sue the school system to get three hours after school. They wouldn't talk to us, they wouldn't even give us the time of day. He had the nerve to send us-
We don't want to talk about personalities.
Oh, okay, well.
Thank you.
The bottom line is-
No names, please.
Nothing changed until Dr. Bregan showed up and made a huge difference in my son. And those seven years were wasted in what could have been productive for him. And I just want to take this moment to support Dr. Bregan and thank him for everything he did. Because without him, he'd probably still be way behind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregan.
Before I call up the next speaker, again, we're not gonna mention names or personalities or what happened in the past. We need, we need to be nice, be kind, I guess it is. All right, next, raise, someone was over here, right there. No, you have to go here, because it has to be recorded. Name and address, please.
Sure, my name's Patty Bueno. I live at 35 Raymond Street in Edison, South Side.
Thank you, Patty.
I went through Edison School System on the South End. You know, houses, they're a little bit smaller, you know? So to get up here, I just want to share my support for Dr. Bregan. I'm South Side, born and bred, single-parent family, okay? The school system for me mattered. I see more from what Dr. Bregan has brought to the table for Edison High School and the schools in Edison's South End than I've seen in years. And for this to be a topic of discussion tonight is beyond me, but I'm here in full support. So I would like to see Dr. Bregan stay.
Thank you, Ms. Brunner. Yes, Dan, in the red.
Roseanne Galtez, 33, Waltuma, Edison. All right, so I'm Roseanne Galtez. I was born in Edison, I went to Edison Schools, and now I raise my two children here. I am also the PTO president at James Moreau Elementary School. From a parent's standpoint, I can say that we've never received so much information that we have regarding our schools and our children since Dr. Bregan got here. He arrives here in Edison and got directly to work in our overcrowding issues, which have been ignored in the past. From a PTO president's standpoint, we never had a superintendent take their time to meet with us. He wanted to know what our issues were and our challenges, and that was his priority. We now continue, right now, during COVID and everything that's going on, we need continuity and leadership during these times. The PTO is the link that holds the school staff, the kids, and the parents together. My husband calls me a professional volunteer, and I do it for the children. And I believe that Dr. Bregan is doing the same.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. They're a professional cleaner.
Yep. Making up for last night.
Okay, so I'm Tina Lappalosa, 66, Ellen Street. I also was born and bred, lived here my whole life. I've also raised two children through the school systems. So I just want to say that I've been through many board meetings. Mr. Shi, are you paying attention?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because you're very busy on your phone. So I've been through many board meetings where Dr. O'Malley did that same exact thing. He would be on his laptop the entire time, not look at anyone. It's now happening again. Our superintendent, he, I've seen him at games, at the schools, at the games. I haven't seen anybody else, ever, a previous superintendent at anything. They're not involved with the children. And he needs to be given the chance to do what he wanted to do. He has led our district through unprecedented times during this coronavirus. As one of the other speakers said, we've gotten a lot of information from him, many videos. Not just papers sent out, we get videos. Yes, I'm the biggest Twitter person, but lots of videos and then you get to see what's really going on. He's not asking for more money. He just needs a chance to do what he was asked to do. And what, we all voted him in to do, right? You all voted him in. You decided he should be there. I don't see any reason why he shouldn't still stay. If you can come up with a good reason, then you should. He was hired at a time when everything was going wrong. There were referendums that kept getting voted down, and we owe him this, and the parents and the taxpayers. Our kids deserve the best, and that is exactly what Dr. Bernard Bregan is. So we are showing our support and we say he needs to stay. And thank you for paying attention.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Rich Lappalosa, how are you? I'm a business owner in town. You've seen me many times. I'd just like to know what's it about? Tell me what it's about. Why do we not want to give him his term? Somebody needs to answer that question. Can you? You're the one who want to do it.
It's not a back-and-forth discussion. We'll have our time to discuss after we hear everyone.
Well, I want to quote something that one of your guys said, Mr. Patel. He wants to put "public," I'm sure you've read it, back into the Edison public school systems. Well, you know what? In reality, that's public, right there. You can't get more public than that. The man's involved. He goes to school, to the games, he does everything he's supposed to do. I haven't seen anybody else there beside Mr. Ross at every game. I've seen Ralph Eriko- Ralph Arico at every game. I've seen Bernie. What about you guys? Can't answer that, I understand. Why would you want to destroy, destroy something that's working fine? If it ain't broken, don't fix it. And let him do his term. How many terms did O'Malley do? He was, in my opinion, you don't want to know my opinion, like my wife said, he was, had his head in the book. Never looked up once, could care less about this town. You liked him, yous all liked him, maybe not everybody, but you did. So why don't we say, just keep the man where he's supposed to be, let him do his job, all right? Just like we all let you do your jobs. We the people that make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Maria, we may have to put you on the payroll.
Thank you very much. Hi, Mansi Mathur, 1 Lombardi Street. I am here to speak in support of Dr. Bregan's renewal of the contract. I think when he came in, it was, it was not expected, but there was like a curveball thrown at him without of nowhere. He needs to be renewed, just to make, to make sure that he does his job, and he's doing it already very well. I will speak both as a parent, as well as a PTO president. We have never gotten a chance before to sit in front of a superintendent and be able to say our issues and things that we are facing at the moment. He not only heard us, but he came back with the answers. There's never been a time where you say something, and then the person remembers for two weeks or three weeks and comebacks with the answer. Or that thing has been rolled out without going back to him and asking him, oh, this was supposed to be done like this, we asked, and it never happened. He gave a solution about how we can fundraise, even though it's a pandemic time, and he came up with great solutions. As a parent, I think what I'm seeing at the moment, I have never seen before. With so much of information, the website looks newer, the information comes through right before when it's needed, and not when the things have already happened, and then you go look for the information. So I think he needs to stay, and we are doing very well under him, and we should continue to achieve more. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Maria. Anthony Dameron, 15 Rhode Island Circle. Roseanne and I graduated '99 in the school over here. Great job, Roseanne. Dr. Bregan, your, your seat represents more than just you itself in, in that seat. It's, it was a two-year battle for some of us to get you here. Now, I had no idea who you were. I didn't know it was going to be you. But many of us asked for a competent superintendent to lead this district, especially what was in front of them, bond and everything else. And then something, something happened, as, as, as it just, by luck, during a campaign, I got a phone call one, one night regarding a, a special needs parent. I heard somebody say special needs parent. I, I got a phone call, and they asked you to meet with me. And even though I was a candidate, I got to be honest, I had no idea where to go from here. Actually, I called Tony D., and we went over to this house. Anyways, what ended up happening was, you weren't here yet. When you got here, I remember, I reached out to you, I found out what your background was, sir. And I emailed you, I asked if you would meet with these parents that I've met with. And you agreed in January. And for those that weren't there, I, I can only say this because I sat in the back of the room, I, I brought this up many times to people, but as I sat in the back of the room, the parents that walked in there, walked in there frustrated, nowhere to turn, years and years, I don't want to say neglect, but confusion, if anything. And then you walked in and immediately from the start, there, I saw the transformation. And you commanded the room, you were, you showed empathy for them, you had solutions. I remember leaving that room, made a couple phone calls, and I said, they got themselves a leader here. I had no, I had no idea who you were. They had themselves a leader. As a matter of fact, we met, as, as I emailed, we met a couple other times, and you've been nothing but transparent with me. We had a bond that came out. But the virus then came and hit us. And it's sad that it happened at the time it did, because your vision hasn't been able to be implemented yet. You've been stuck with this, this is all new to us. And from what I hear, you've done a great job. There's no history to guide us. There was nothing that happened before, this is, we're all in it together. And if you look around to the other districts, and I've done my research, what other districts offer their superintendents, and let me just rephrase, the superintendent's job is the biggest job in the township. It's bigger than the mayor's. It's that big of a job. It took two years to get you here. Sir, they, you haven't implemented anything yet. You've been dealing what you've been dealing with. And to give you a fair contract, and I'll tell you the reason, I'll be honest with you, the reason why is because in our political climate in this town, the guy cannot do his job accurately and fairly what goes on behind the scenes. He can't do it. It's impossible. So this guy deserves whatever extension, whatever it may be, to keep him here. I'm telling you right now, he could leave the district for the next decade, easily, for the next decade, all right? And I hope you're here for the next decade. As I said when I ran last year, as I said when I ran, I said, what would, what would show that you were a good superintendent is if you outlive every single board member. And I hope you outlive every single, well, not outlive, but their terms.
Easy.
You know? I like all you guys, you guys are all good. Even Jared. Dan, you're doing a great job, by the way. I'm telling you, great job, Dan. Keep up the good work, buddy. But it's, I can, I see you here, I envision you here. I saw you, I saw you that day, and I'm telling you, I, listen, I, I don't, I never worked with a superintendent, never hired one, but you got it. I'm telling you, you got it. So keep this guy here. He should be here for the next decade, easily. He's here, he easily can run this district for 15 years. Dr. Bregan, thank you for everything you're doing, seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, up. Mr. Baker, you almost missed out.
Evening all, Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue. I stand before this board today to echo some comments I made on November 25th, 2019, standing in support of your, your vote, Dr. Bregan, as superintendent. And since November 25th, 2019, I, along with the residents of Edison, continue to be amazed at the work that you do. As a school administrator myself, I, I've told you this before, I've never received an email response faster. And I think this room would agree that you are the person that this district has needed for a long time. But I'll say something a little bit unfavorable, probably in this room, and that is that your contract is still available and still in, in effect until June 30th, 2023. And so I do think that this time, at this point, three or four days before we reopen, I just think it's inappropriate that this is the conversation this body is having. This is, this is not a, and, and I, this is not a statement in support or against you. You know I support you. You know we battle, you know we go with it. And I'll stand here publicly say, I support Dr. Bregan. But I also publicly support our kids and our families. And I, and I really do have a problem that this board thought this is the conversation that we should be having tonight. I don't know what conversations are happening behind closed doors or in closed session. I don't know what discussions we're having to plan for our reopening. But as a school official myself, I know the most important thing is making sure that we open our doors the safest way possible. And I'm confident that you are. I'm confident that this district is. But this town wants to know that, too. This town wants to know that we are moving in the right direction as we prepare to reopen in probably the scariest times we've ever encountered. And so again, I stand before you, not as a statement of opposition, but just as a statement of priority. This is not the conversation we should be having tonight. I encourage this board to table this resolution. Don't vote it down. Table this resolution, because this, again, is not the conversation we should be having tonight. And again, I want to be clear, I stand in support of Dr. Bregan and the work he is doing for this community and for the 16-plus thousand, 16,000-plus students in this town. You are the leader that I, I'm just amazed at the work that you do and the level of communication you do. But again, I strongly encourage this board to move to table this resolution. Let us get through reopening. Let us reevaluate it. I want you here for the long run. I want you until my son, who is a two-year-old, goes to James Monroe in three years. I want to stand next to you when we announce that we've got full-day kindergarten. I want you to be the person who's leading us into the next great things that this town can do. But tonight is not the time for us to have that conversation, I'm sorry. So I encourage this board to table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to, we got to raise our hand quicker, otherwise you're going to get missed. Mr. Baker out?
Russ Burner, Mill Road. Been a lifelong Edison resident. To some people, that's a good thing. To others, it has a negative connotation. But to me, I think it's a great thing. I have kids in the district, been a part of the district since 1981 in some way, shape, or form. And there's been good times, there's been some bad times. All I can say is that over the last few years, before Dr. Bregan was in, there was really no face to the organization. I, I have three kids in the district. I probably couldn't even pick out the superintendent before him out of a lineup. Dr. Bregan came in, even before we had COVID, there was a number of deaths within the community, among the children and the schools, and he was a face to everything. For teachers and for kids in the district, I can't express how important that is, to know that there's someone there that cares. Going through all this and seeing the somewhat daily videos and feedback, someone had alluded to the fact that he's pretty quick with replying to emails, just knowing that someone's going to answer your question. It might not be the answer you want, but you're going to get an answer. For years, we didn't have that. For years in town, under prior regimes, you were afraid when the superintendent walked in the building. People were cowering, running in fear. Doors were getting slammed. But currently, I, I think it's a lot more cordial environment. People know there's a dialogue, there's things you need to do, but if you need something, you can ask, and you may get what you need. Hopefully, you do. But it'll at least entertain the question. Whether you're a student, a teacher, a coach, an administrator, the, the door's open, and that dialogue is there. He's here not just for himself, but for the kids, the teachers, the staff. Everyone counts to Dr. Bregan. Like I said, for years, there, there was no face to, to, to the, to the Board of Ed. And for lack of a better term, he's probably going to hate me for this, but he's the face of it now. It might not be the prettiest face, but there's a face to it. He's out there, he's public. There may be things that people don't agree with, but you know what? He's going to stick to his guns and do what he thinks is right. It might not be what you think is right, but it's what he thinks is right, it's for the greater good. So I can't express anymore how I, I think it would be imperative to give him his two more years. Because right now, with everything going on, we need a face to everything. We need to know there's someone that cares, whether it's for your kid, for you as a parent, and there's a dialogue, so to know what's going on. So I, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Last chance. Yes.
I wasn't going to speak, oh, sorry. Maria Wise, 33, Parch Place. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I feel like I need to speak on my daughter's behalf. She just started Thomas Jefferson this year, and it's been a roller coaster, as all of the parents must know by now, with remote learning and now going into hybrid. I have to say, I, I have older children, my oldest one being 22. Out of all the superintendents we've experienced in this town, Dr. Bregan has been the most responsive, and I have to thank you for that. I've gone through, I have a special needs son. We went through hell in this district. We were able to find Collier School with Mr. Raymond Bakke, he was a lifesaver for us. But I've never experienced a superintendent that, number one, responds back to you. If you send him an email, he will actually email you back. That, that, to me, was mind-blowing. That was the first time I've ever seen that. But not only does he respond, he doesn't give you like a washed version of like, you know, a dry answer, just to make it look like he responded back. He genuinely shows his concern and will give you suggestions. And if he can't answer something, he will tell you, I don't know the answer, but he goes and he finds the answer for you. And for me, as a mother, I just want to say thank you. I think you're doing a great job. And I, I have to echo Mr. Breaker, Baker, sorry, just turned your name up. This isn't the time to have this conversation. You know, it's, we're in a pandemic, we have so many bigger issues going on right now. I agree we need to open the doors safely for our children. Unfortunately, it's going to be like a trial and error period. We're going to have to figure out what works. I don't think this is the time to have the conversation, because he needs to concentrate on the kids' safety right now and get them safely into at least the next marking period, let alone the end of the school year. So I would ask that you please table this conversation.
Thank you. Okay, public comments open, over, and now we're going to have board comments and discussion, and then we'll have a vote. Any board members like to speak?
On this issue?
Mrs., yes, on this issue only?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes. Anthony Dameron, I never heard you speak better. And you said something very profound tonight, and that is that people who are not on the Board of Education don't know what swims beneath the surface. You don't. This is the time to have this conversation, taken from me. This is the right time. What we don't need right now is more chaos moving forward, which I promise you could possibly happen. And I hope you're listening to what I'm saying. This is the time to have this conversation.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Matiker? Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Ms. Matiker?
So I, I listened to all of you, and one common theme I heard that I, that I heard was that all of you would like Dr. Bregan to continue. And I feel like for being able to do your job well and to ensure that everything runs smoothly, you need to have job security. Edison School District has issues that cannot be resolved in one year or two years. We need to have a long-range plan, and we can't have that plan unless our superintendent knows that he's going to be here for a couple of years. So if we really support him, as I've heard from all of you, there is no reason to procrastinate, and we need to just make sure that, you know, he has that job security so he can perform. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll take our vote. Thank you.
Can I, can I have a proposal?
I heard, okay.
Yeah, because we heard the, the folks talking about this. Dr. Bregan has done a great job, and we are the ones that brought him in.
You can take your mask down, because your glasses are foggy.
Okay. Dr. Bregan has done a great job, and I agree with a lot of the comments from the public. I also agree with what Brett said. We should concentrate on opening the schools. The school's opening on Monday, and all the concentration, all the effort should be on that. So, so I would propose to table this conversation, to table this vote until the next meeting. We have the meeting on Tuesday. Let's have more discussions in the board, and then let's, let's-
All right, excuse me, excuse me.
Let's, let's vote for, for the next week.
You need to make a motion.
Okay. Can I have a motion to table this vote until next Tuesday?
Do we have a second? Mrs. Chen, Dr. Chen, I'm sorry. Okay. Dr. Chen, roll call, yeah, roll call, I'm sorry, Dan.
Okay, this is a motion to table the, the vote on the superintendent's consent. Ms. Matiker?
No. No.
Ms. Budowski?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
As I would love to say my piece, at this point, I am withholding due to conflict.
So you're abstaining?
Abstaining, okay. In other words, abstaining.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
No.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
No.
Two, three, four, I got five yeses.
Okay. So this motion has been tabled till Mon, uh, Tuesday? I guess we'll bring it up Tuesday, Mr. Shi?
Let's discuss it and let's see what, what I do. I just wanna point it out that on the resolution, the, the end date is July first, twenty twenty-five, should be that June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Probably. Midnight on the first, according to the attorney.
Okay. All the other contracts, I just.
I thought it was June thirtieth, too. End of the school year. I'm sorry.
The, the language of the contract is that services end on, at the close of business on the thirtieth. And the contract ends midnight on the first because that's what statute says. It makes no sense, but that's what the statute says.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right, now we're gonna go into the reports, six, seven, eight. Dr. Bragan, I guess you start?
First one is a public hearing on the Violence and Vandalism Report, which is mandated to report out twice annually. This report runs from, it's contained in the agenda, and this one runs from January one to June thirtieth. As you all know, on March thirteenth, we went to remote instruction. So those numbers are significantly lower than they would normally be. So we didn't even put a comparison from year to year because they're somewhat skewed, but we have to report that out as the Violence and Vandalism Report contained within the agenda. You wanna keep going or we don't?
Uh, any questions from the board on item six? Item six.
I just had a question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Matiker.
I saw, I'm seeing that there are six instances of substance abuse. I just wanted to find out, oh, are we talking about the violence and?
Yes.
Okay, so I see that there's six instances of substance abuse. Can we elaborate more on that, like what kind of substance abuse?
I can't speak to the specifics about it was, but typically, that's students that were suspected of being under the influence.
Okay.
So, can I have a question on that?
Go ahead, Dr. Mr. Shi.
Yeah, so this is from January to June. So is this before the COVID or was, are we collecting the same data during the COVID or this is before COVID?
We, we have to report out on the timeframe from January first to June thirtieth. And all these incidents occurred while school was in session in person. So this is before we went out on remote instruction in March.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, in actuality, it's only a two-and-a-half-month period report as opposed to the six months in Norway.
Just to let the public know, even though it says public hearing on number six after that, we're gonna wait until the end after Dr. Bragan and, and Dan finishes their report, and then we'll have public comments on that, on everything. Okay, Dr. Bragan? Number seven?
Okay, next up is the approval of the bid for pupil transportation. You wanna go over that?
Sure. We tried to wait as long as we could to see if we can get renewals from our current contractors. However, we ran out of time, so we put this out to bid as one hundred and ninety-four routes. We got a bid on all of them except for nineteen. We are recommended to go with the low one on every single route. We are getting quotes for those nineteen. We hopefully will have coverage for every single route on Monday to the nineteenth. The numbers came in better than I anticipated. We were thinking they were gonna come in two or three times as high. They came up about ten percent. So what, I'm very happy about that. So we need to approve it tonight because our, we have to approve the contracts before we actually start their services. Services start Monday, I can't wait till Tuesday and approve something that already started. So we have to approve it tonight.
Okay, board member comments or questions on number seven?
Just, did it went up ten percent?
Yeah.
The whole thing?
Not all of them, some of them did.
Oh, some of them.
Especially the ones that DAPR bid on.
Okay.
Cuz they're, these are all DAPR rounds. We were trying to get them to renew at one point seven percent.
How many, how many routes are there?
Excuse me?
How many routes?
How many runs?
One, one ninety, one?
How many altogether did we? Altogether, one hundred and ninety-four. They, they got, they won fifty of them.
They won fifty?
DAPR won fifty of them.
Okay, so all the fifty went up ten percent?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, not everyone won by that much, but roughly.
How about the remaining one hundred and forty?
The other ones came up about five percent.
Five percent, oh, okay. So that's within, within the, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number eight, Dr.?
I think the next up is the Finance and Facilities Committee Report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Ms. Conway was gonna report on that, I believe?
Oh, I missed that one, I'm sorry. Number eight, yes.
I'm very excited about this, by the way.
Yes.
Just wanted to let you know. The date of our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting was on October twelfth at four PM. In attendance was Ralph Eriko, Unit Chen, Shivie Prasad Matiker, Dr. Bragan, Dan Mashad, and William Calabas, and myself. USA Architects staff, Peter Campiani, Campiani, sorry, Andrew Adonato, Michael Bar, Barnes. I just knew their first names. Carrie Zagarsky presented three options for the Lincoln Elementary School addition. The three options varied in scope. Option one included five new classrooms, a gymnasium, a kitchen, and requires the continued use of two classroom trailers that are currently there. The estimated cost of the option one was seven million dollars. Option two includes ten new classrooms, a gymnasium, a kitchen, and allows the use of one of the classroom trailers, if needed, for other use. And the estimated cost of option two was nine million dollars. Option three includes eight new classrooms, a gymnasium, a kitchen, and requires the removal of both classroom trailers. The estimated cost of option three was twelve million dollars. The committee went on to discuss the three options and is recommending that the district approve option two. The committee discussed the funding of option two, and the recommendation is to use the six million dollars that is currently in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital outlay budget and appropriate the balance from the district's capital reserve account. The committee discussed estimated timelines for the project, and USA Architects stated that if the board approved the project this month, October, they would anticipate bidding the project by March of twenty twenty-one and award the bid by May of twenty twenty-one and break ground during the summer of twenty twenty-one. The addition would be ready for September of twenty twenty-two. The meeting adjourned at five thirty-seven PM. We were very excited about what we were shown. They met with the principal, Buildings and Grounds, and they went through the building and thoroughly went over everything that was absolutely needed for the school. And it's exciting that we have the opportunity to actually move forward and help that school that's in desperate need to work on their overcrowding issue. And it's something good that I felt as being a member of the Facilities Committee that we're moving forward, not only with everything that's going on in our district, but we're moving forward to help alleviate one of our main problems in the district. And I truly commend Dr. Bragan and the architects and Buildings and Grounds for coming together and coming up with a great plan. It may not have all the bells and whistles, but every child is gonna have a very comfortable seat. And we're moving in the positive, uh, positive direction. And now I just gave my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Eriko.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Great job, by the way, with the Finance Facility Committee to get that done, along with Dr. Bragan. I think we have a short presentation by USA Architects.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Bragan, members of the administration, and the people of Edison. Well, people that, that remain. Good evening tonight. Yeah, we're, we're very excited about this project. We understand capacity issues within Edison that have been a problem for years. And we're excited to be partnering with you to hopefully begin alleviating that. So as Ms. Conway stated, we met with Principal Scully and talked about his needs. And what you'll see is three different options. I'll show you the three options. But I want you to understand before we begin that Mr. Scully's main concern was the sections required, the classrooms required for the children. So all three options provide seven sections per grade. All three options have a similar security entrance at the main entrance. All three options have a similar multipurpose room, gymnasium. All three options have a similar kitchen addition, and there's some alternates that we can look at. So option number one is the lowest-cost option. And essentially, the bottom of the page is the front of the school, and the top of the page is the addition which would go out into the yard of the facility. Simply, straightforward, five classrooms, gymnasium. There's alternates for two connecting corridors which would allow better circulation within the school. Both trailers are required to stay, as Ms. Conway has stated. This will provide seven sections per grade for the school and is the lowest of the options. As I said, seven sections per grade, the security entrance, the multipurpose room, the kitchen addition, the alternates for the quarters, five additional classrooms, and the two modulars have to stay in order to maintain the seven sections per grade. Option two is a fairly compact option, and that allowed us to add two additional classrooms. There is a total of ten. And if you can see ghosted out at the bottom of the addition, the one trailer has to move in order to create and build the addition. That second trailer could remain during construction. We'll have a security gate to divide the students from construction. And at the end of construction, save the money, keep the building, use it for child study team, use it for offices, use it for storage. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to go. And again, similar, seven sections per grade, security entrance, the multipurpose room, the kitchen addition, the alternate quarters. Because of the compact nature of the plan, it actually provides ten classrooms, and one of the modulars can stay. That would be your option. The third addition is very similar, and this is where we really started, to the referendum plan. However, we pared it down. We made the corridors eight feet wide. Some of your corridors were close to twenty feet wide. But this provides eight classrooms in the back. It does provide circulation. You can see the connecting corridors and a similar-sized, three-station gymnasium. And then, again, same thing. Seven sections per grade, the security entrance, the multipurpose room, the kitchen, the alternate for the quarters, the eight classrooms. And both modulars, this is a key, cuz there's a lot of site work in this plan, both modulars have to be removed before we even get started with this plan. And that's why it's probably the most of the three options. Thank you, Mr. President. If there's any questions for the board or?
Yeah, I know everyone wasn't in the Finance Facilities meeting, so I wanna give those board members an opportunity to ask questions if they have any.
He can go by option two?
Option two.
Yeah, what is this thing, you know, dotted line over there?
The kitchen area?
Grade four class, classroom. Grade four, those, what, what?
Let me put my glasses on.
It's the renovation, the renovation part, Pete, instead of the, the new one.
Oh, that's renovation?
Yeah, the, the dark purple is renovation.
The middle rooms are being renovated, Pete.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. What, what I failed to say is, in order to connect the addition, in order to connect both ends of the addition, we need to create a corridor from, if you're looking at the top wing, you see two kindergartens at the top and two grade-one classrooms. At the end, there's two kindergartens and there's not a corridor. So that would be renovation and a new corridor that would extend into the addition. And it's a similar type of renovation in the grade-four classrooms.
Okay. So my other question is, this one involves the removal of two, uh, one trailer which is two classrooms, right?
Yes.
Okay. So when are you gonna remove these trailers and what is the impact to the schools while these two are, are being removed? Are we losing two classrooms from the get-go or you're doing it a little bit later down the road?
We, we did discuss that at the meeting, Mrs. Conway, correct?
Yes.
And the option there is to find classroom space with the current trailer that we have there that we're gonna keep.
Yes.
And then if we need to move students around in the district, because these trailers are for special needs students, we would then move them around for that one year.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a playground around there? So the playground, so the playground is gone, right?
The, the playground is approximately where the word alterations at Lincoln School is located. It's, uh.
Like the one on the first trailer here.
Right. It's in front of the first trailer.
Oh, okay, it's on the other side, okay. I thought it's, it's behind. Okay. Okay. Besides this, any, besides this renovation of these four classrooms on the corridor, any other renovations with the other rooms that we're talking about?
No, the four classrooms will be renovated.
Yes.
There will be some renovations when we touch the front entrance to create the security vestibule. And there may be some minor renovations to the cafeteria when we create the kitchen and the service corridor.
Okay. So these will be done during the summertime? You confident that, that, cuz that will not interfere with the, the regular ongoing of the class?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And will this plan provide any possibilities? Yeah, usually when you, architects, when you guys design this, you'll talk about, you know, you leave some rooms for future expansion and so on. Is this plan that address that, I guess then on the top, we can just add if you wanted to?
Well, the, there's, there's several places, Mr. Shi, where, where you could certainly add on. You can certainly add on in the upper wing where the fifth-grade classrooms are presently. If you remove that trailer and then you could make an L and connect it back to the gym. You could put additional classrooms to the north side of the multipurpose room, similar to the grade-one classrooms that are in the back there. So there's, there's, there's places to add.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
So the, the, the other costs is, you talk about nine million dollars. Does it include all the furnitures and everything or this is just the construction cost?
Presently, it's the construction costs. And furniture will be whatever the board and the administration decide.
We're not adding students, we're just adding space.
A lot of the furniture could be moved from the existing classrooms into the new.
Okay.
We discussed that at the meeting.
All right. So the other thing is, this is a very old building. During the construction, will the electrical panels and the circuit being upgraded? So if down the road, we are ready for air conditioning stuff, we're ready to just plug it in, the window units?
Mr. Shi, good question. These new classrooms, anything new?
I know the new, I'm talking about the old ones.
Old, okay.
The, 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 there's a grid in the old building. Will that be upgraded to accommodate future, you know, AC needs or whatever? Right now, these buildings are very old. Even you're plugging all the computers and stuff that, I, I don't know if the circuits will be able to handle it.
I had asked about the capacity of the electricity coming into the complex. And I believe I was told it was six hundred amps. And I kinda giggled at that, thinking that just a single-family home is two hundred. And I was told that we would have to bring in, what, was it twelve hundred?
Well, we, we're still in the very early stage, but let me, let me say this. One of the first things that we did notice was that we had three can transformer, those little garbage cans up on the post outside of the building. And that was barely adequate, if adequate, for the existing facility. We know that the facility requires a new transformer. That is part of the project. The key is the ballet of getting that in first, doing some minor adjustments, removing that trailer, putting a temporary pole and connecting everything back so that we have electric before September, well before September. Then putting in a new switchgear within the addition and then backfeeding the existing building so that there will be a sufficient increase in power, in electricity for any future use. And we could design that based on the future needs of the board.
Yeah, cuz.
That's a key point.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, that that's put into consideration, so down the road.
That was one of my questions. As a teacher, we had a plug in the front of the room and a plug in the back of the room. I said, you think you can give me more plugs?
That's a must, Pete.
Principal Scully alerted us to that, and we saw that if you go out there and you look at the backside of that fifth-classroom addition and you see what's there. Principal Scully alerted us to that and we saw, if you go out there and you look at the backside of that fifth classroom addition and you see what's there.
Yeah, okay. So, another question. And Dr. Bragan, this is related to what we have said before. Solar panels. Are we considering solars on top of these new?
I, I don't know if Pete-
I would love to talk about that.
Yeah.
Right now, because there are a lot of, you know, what you call grants and stuff is still available. And I think the state changed the rules, so the incentive is a little bit bigger. Are we considering something like this?
Not within this project. Now, we have not discussed it. But I would certainly welcome to be your champion and help you look at an energy savings improvement plan for the entire district. And look at solar, look at energy savings, and use that energy savings to improve the capital needs of all your buildings. That is something that we did not look, within the two, three weeks that we've looked at with this, we focus strictly on the addition. And to put one solar panel up at one school might not make sense in a grand scheme of things. You don't get the bang for your buck if you go with a larger complex and more involved project. But I would certainly, we've done many, many energy savings improvement projects for many school districts.
Many things we actually did talk about, could we do this, or could we do that, could we do this? And it's like going into a candy store. But at this point, we need to focus on doing this because that's the number one requirement is to work on the overcrowding in this particular school. After that, I don't think Peter's going anywhere. And we had asked about, right away I had asked about air conditioning from the kitchen, since there's a renovation going over there, to the cafeteria area. And then working our way, but the biggest thing that we need first and foremost is the electrical competence.
The backbone, yes.
So the site work, we have parking and stuff, will that impact any of that?
When we met with Principal Scully, he indicated that parking is sufficient without adding a whole new lot.
Dr. Bragan?
Yeah, just in regards to the solars, Mr. She said, Mr. Michelle and I were working with a few vendors on putting together projects across the district. And when we started in conversations with Pete, we talked about, as he mentioned in ESIP, that we started that process with SSP, but that's a whole district-wide perspective. And it also involves our facilities. Director of Building and Grounds, Will Colibas. I think that's the way to go. And once we get this up and running, we would talk about district-wide-
Great idea.
And, you know, using the energy savings to fund all those enhancements that'll help us maybe get air conditioning in other buildings and things like that. So we started those preliminary conversations with individuals for the roofs that were available. But I think the district-wide plan via ESIP, and we just, we were in preliminary conversations. Is that fair, Pete? We really didn't discuss much else.
Agreed, yes.
But I think that's where we should go, district-wide. And if we do it appropriately, correct me if I'm wrong, we can get it at no additional cost to the district.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, you promised that it'll be done. We took out the James Morel because we're going to go to the district-wide. So we can get a big bang for our bucks, right?
Ralph, can I just add something? So I think there's something else. I mean, I asked my questions during the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, but there was something that you mentioned during the meeting which I don't think has been discussed right now, which was, I think, the air conditioning units, which should be like, you know, the roof air conditioning. Maybe you can talk about that?
Yeah. You know, we started talking a little more in-depth about the HVAC within the facility. And, you know, we're at a point now, because of the pandemic, where we need to look at different ways, different ways on how we design schools. So we're looking at, instead of one large unit where all the air comes in and all the air gets dispersed and there's cross, I don't want to say contamination, but there's cross air from this classroom to this classroom to this classroom. We're looking at probably small package units for each classroom, air conditioning. The air is fresh air as maintained as required, fresh air constant during the occupied cycle. And it stays within that classroom. And not only that, we're also looking at ways with natural ventilation on how we can improve that. All in a simple, straightforward design. So yes, it's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Ms. Madiker? Anyone else?
So Pete, I like the word simple because that's where you, a couple of years ago when you came in, we all wanted the very simple stuff. I don't, you know, we don't want Taj Mahal and-
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add one?
Sorry, anyone else?
No, just wanted to add that, like, if I remember correctly, with the referendum, we were spending $14 million and adding eight classrooms. But here it's $9 million and 10 classrooms. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, we just need the board to give a hand vote to proceed to let Pete start his motion. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Conway.
I make a motion that we can all raise our hands.
Oh, no. I don't think we need a motion, do we? Okay, yeah, so, so, okay, so Mrs. Conway has a motion, Ms.?
Can I ask a quick question? It has nothing to do with the vote.
Sure.
Where's the money coming from?
Oh, Dan, money? Where is it going to come from? The six million that we have?
We have six million in capital outlay. I have the money in the capital reserve account for whatever the difference might be.
So how much money we have in capital reserve right now?
Right now, I'm sitting with 12.5.
12.5?
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, and then second, Ms. Podolsky. Roll call.
Ms. Madiker?
So just to clarify, so right now we are not spending any money. We're just awarding the bid so that we know what it looks like, right? And in February, we're going to award the bid, right? So this is just time for the architect to draw the plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Ms. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. She?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Great plan. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Get it done, get it done on time, man.
Going right now, Jack.
Okay. You know my, you know my issue on this. Thanks.
All right. Number nine, Dr. Bragan.
All right. Thank you, Board President Eriko. A few things to go over. If you'll see the revision to the 2020-21 school calendar, we included on Monday, November 16th, the recognition for the holiday of Diwali that was not in there. We'll take one of our three inclement weather days in place of that holiday on November 16th. American Education Week, which is in its 99th year, will be recognized November 16th through November 20th. Traditionally, we've invited people in the buildings to sit in classrooms during scheduled times. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we don't think that's appropriate at this time. But we still want to recognize, you know, National Education Week at that point. The Week of Respect, which is an annual event in New Jersey, it occurred between October 5th and October 9th. And again, while we were still in a totally remote program, we had numerous activities at all of our schools, and that's contained within the documents there as well as on our website in each of the individual schools. You'll also find a memorandum of agreement for our Ice Hockey Parents Association. You know, we have run that for our city sport over a number of years where the parents do have to pay a portion of the fees for that. And we do it in conjunction with John P. Stevens High School, Edison High School, and Matouchen High School. And it's been a pretty successful endeavor over the years. You'll also find the school self-assessment for the anti-bullying harassment legislation that we have to do on an annual basis. This is where the school basically assesses itself as far as how well they're doing implementing policies, procedures, providing training for staff and students, and how to mitigate possible incidents of harassment, intimidation, bullying, and be more proactive in dealing with students in conflict resolution. The scores range from a 50 to a 78, and you'll see all of our scores, they're arranged in the 70s. And those that is high as 78 and some as high, and some from 70 to 78. And again, it's a self-reporting, self-assessment for the schools. We also have the appointment of the affirmative action officer and the Title IX, Title VI, I'm sorry, Title IV and Title IX officer. And that's going to be Dr. Eddie Alderelli. Normally, that's our HR director. And at the time when the school year started, Dr. Alderelli was not in that position yet, so we want to correct that and make Dr. Alderelli that position. For curriculum and instruction reports, we have two basic curriculum guides that were revisions. And they're related to career and vocational readiness class as well as life skills classes 1 and 2. You'll also find the special services report with our added district placements. And, you know, that's put on on a monthly basis. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Michelle for our business administrators' report and the board secretary's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, you have a couple of the minutes from last month that if you have any questions on that, just let me know. I have the investment report for the month of September. We received interest in the amount of $5,637. So our total for the year is up to $17,006.90. Following that is the board secretary's report for the month of August, which is still a summer month, so you're going to notice there's still quite a balance because we don't have our 10-month salaries covered yet. Next month, you'll see a huge difference in that. That's followed by the church or school monies report for the same period of time. Then we have some resolutions that will be asking for approval on Monday, Tuesday night next week. The first one is appropriation of extraordinary aid. And you're going to notice there's two large numbers here. We went over this with Dr. Conklin and Dr. Bragan regarding the IEP requirements that did not take place from last March 14th until the end of June because we were all, you know, in the COVID-
Remote.
All remote and the child study teams weren't able to do that. So during the summer months, they had to make up all that time and all those IEPs to keep in compliance with the law. So we need to transfer monies into those lines because I didn't anticipate that happening. So that's what the biggest chunk is, the speech therapists and the child study team salaries in the total of $450,000, $450,000.
Just on that, Ms. Michelle, I don't think it was the IEPs. I think it was actually the testing that has to occur, one-to-one, where the student has to be in person to do that. The IEPs, you know, you could do a lot of that work from remotely. But none of the assessments are normed to be tested remotely, so they had to take place in a one-to-one setting, which we then had to do over the summer, which incurred that cost.
Right, yep. Okay, item number two, the thermal monitors. We have, we want to submit, we need the board to approve, the submission of a FEMA grant for the $342,000 for the larger units that we had. Now FEMA only gives us 75%, but $342,000 is that 75%. So we want to submit that for FEMA reimbursement. The next three, number three, four, and five, all of these are all thanks to Maria Lopez, our new grants writer, grants coordinator. There's one for John Adams for $20,000 for a grant called the Investors Validation Grant. We also have the Sony Corporation Grant for John Adams also for $15,000. And then we have the Sustainable New Jersey for the James Madison Air Music School for $10,000. So we thank Maria Lopez for that nice job that she did there. Item number six, our gasoline and diesel fuel that we purchase on as a bulk, because we have two $3,000 tanks in our, in the grants department. And we buy the bulk. And we have a bid through Hunterdon County that expires this month. And they went out to bid again. And as you can see, the, this is based on the Newark port rack price that this is the amount that's above that. So I just checked it yesterday, and right now we're paying $1.54 for gasoline and $1.67 for diesel. Because, of course, we don't pay any of the taxes. So we're in pretty good shape regarding that. Non-public nursing aid. You may remember we did this once before. It was $195,000. The state came up with another $10,000. So we have to re-adopt this for now for 205. This is for the non-public schools, the nursing services that go through the Ed Services Commission. But we need the board to approve that. Then we finally found, got our non-public school security aid number, $352,000. That's also for non-public. The only thing we didn't get yet is the non-public technology monies. We'll probably have that for the next meeting. Item number nine is one purchase order for the non-public security monies that we have for PESAC Raymond Yeshiva for $1,340. We need the board to approve that PO before we submit it. Then we have a list of obsolete items that the schools have submitted to us. And then we have the bill list for September in the amount of $15,595,000. This one includes the 10-month salaries for the, for the September. And then the final thing is the transportation report for October. You can see that these are all through the Ed Services Commission, and these are all special education routes. And that concludes my report. Ms. Eriko?
Thank you, Mr. Michelle. Mrs. Feld, any questions?
Oh, yeah, we're at that point now. Open discussion for board members.
Okay. So I have a few questions regarding busing. One being, I know that some parents got emails for subscription busing. But if their kid is remote right now and they don't know what's going to happen of when we're actually going to be fully back in school, what are they supposed to do with those forms that they receive?
Well, if they want to hold off on it, we will have another open enrollment time for the subscription busing because we know we're thrown remote right now and we go to full-time in, say, the middle of November. We will then reduce the rate again because it will be a shorter period of time, and we'll open it up again for people to apply.
And if they pay now, and will they get the money back if they don't?
If they pay now, we go remote, just like we did with last year. We gave them a $200 credit. We would do the same thing this year.
Okay. And my other question is, for bus passes, are they now available on parent portal?
Yes, they were supposed to, went out today electronically to the parent portal.
Okay. And my final bus question is, are we, are we ready to go with all of our routes?
We, yes, we're ready to go. We are consolidating right now because we got a letter today from Barker that there's going to be some issues because they lost 32 drivers, 12 of them retired instead of going out. And they said they couldn't get a whole 20 of them. That's 32 drivers. But today I talked to, was Mr. Benedict, and we are now, we're verifying how many kids are going to be on some of these routes. Because don't forget, out of 17,000, we're only going to have a little less than 4,000 coming. And of those 4,000, they're not all bust. So we just went through all of the routes. We have some routes that only had three or four kids on it. We are going to divert those and try to combine those routes to pick up additional kids. So we think we have everything covered. Of course, we won't know for sure until Monday morning, but right now we do think we have everything covered at this point.
Are we expecting that kids will be wearing masks on the bus?
That's one of our protocols, yes.
And what about temperature checks? That's when they get to school?
Not on the bus, when they enter, when they get to school.
That's it.
Thank you, Phil. Carrie, go to you next.
Yeah, so just a quick question on the number two. We had a FEMA grant for the thermal imaging system. That's a temperature thing, right? And we also talked about last time applying FEMA money for those, a MacBook, that's somewhere around $650,000.
Yes.
Sorry. Where is that? Is that, are we still-
The next phase. We're going to have multiple FEMA. We can do more than one. We wanted to get this one in right away.
Sure.
Because we want to get those thermal imaging refunds back or the reimbursements back. But we will be doing additional ones between now and the end of the year.
Okay. So the other one's also 75%?
75%. FEMA's only gives you 75%.
So FEMA's only 75%, so we are paying pickup 25% out of that.
Right, correct.
Okay, okay. So I think the two added together, it's somewhere around a million dollars, $1.1 million. So we are picking about a quarter million dollars just for those equipment. Okay. So this one, does it, this is the bigger units for the buildings, right? We have the individual units. Are those part of this or is it a separate one?
Yeah, we actually put that one, we put that one against the 855, the Corona Relief Fund.
Oh, the earlier, the earlier ones.
That was about, that was about $40,000.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Conway?
I just have one quick question, and I don't want to cause trouble, but we talked about, I'll do it anyway. We talked about the facility of Lincoln Elementary School. And, but I don't see on the agenda where we were supposed to officially vote. Is it okay that we did it tonight? I thought we were going to-
It said resolution, so we had a vote. But the only, we didn't vote on anything but having the architect start his process. We didn't spend a penny. That was the concern.
We have a resolution ready for Tuesday night that's officially going to-
Okay, so Tuesday, we're actually officially-
Right, tonight was really the-
This was just to know if you want to go forward.
Although it said resolution, yeah. It says resolution, but-
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we're-
Good point. Thank you.
I don't want to-
Nope. And we're going to do everything? All right.
I just have one quick comment on this. I forgot to say it. I am glad to see the grants coming in.
Yes, paying for herself already.
Well, not yet.
Not yet, but she's only here two months.
130. This is, this is only 45, so.
So she does 45 every three months?
That's right. Well, keep it going.
She's doing a great job, I heard.
All right, thank you very much. That's fantastic. This is all, I've never seen these before, so this is all good.
This is good, yeah. This is good. Thank you, Mr. She. Ms. Podolsky, anything? No? Very quiet down there, Ms. Podolsky.
You're very quiet. I had coral surgery.
Oh, I'm sorry. The whole tooth thing, I forgot. Ms. Maroni, any comments?
No.
Okay. Ms. Pang?
No.
Dr. Chen?
Actually, for today, I received the parents, the email to the parents, and they said that the lunch and breakfast is provided by the school district for free. So how, where did the money come from, and how does that work?
United States Department of Agriculture, and they decided to extend it for the remainder of the full year. So every student that attends, actually, every student, if they would like to have the breakfast and the lunch every day, can get.
Won't cost us anything. It's a federal government thing. I just saw, just recently, that they extended it throughout the school year, twenty, twenty-one.
So the student required to like register or something, no?
They just have to order the, before, because, you know, we have a variety of a vegetarian meal or a non-vegetarian meal, so we want to make sure we have enough of each meal.
Okay.
Good question, Dr. Chen, thank you.
Actually, Fal, I do remember something. I know we talked about the bus pass. I just looked at the parent portal this afternoon and now, and I don't see the bus pass, the online bus pass.
Okay.
I'll follow up. I spoke to Mr. Benedict. He said it was there, so I'll double-check and make sure we get it done.
Is it something that they can print it out? The parents can print it out?
I believe the parents can print it out. We don't mail them ourselves, but you can print it out at home.
We used to print them out in our central office and then mail them out to everybody. This was making it available for everybody so they could print it out themselves.
Yeah.
Also, with the lower numbers of students coming during the hybrid, the drivers will have a roster, and the students don't actually need a physical pass to get on the bus because there'll be a limited number of students. They'll know the students, again, it's much lower than it would normally be a fifty-four passenger bus.
Yeah, as long as they know that they can get on the bus, I, yeah.
We'll double-check. I'll find out from.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, yeah, I said, as long as the students or the parents know that they can get on the bus, I guess that's fine. It just, for some, some of the route, I think they said subscription or free bus?
Mm-hmm.
And for those, if they don't get the subscription form, how would they, how would they know if the parents are going to, if the kids are going to get the free bus, or they're going to get, they would have to do the subscription? It's not really clear on the parent portal which way they are, because, you know, kids, when they move from middle school to high school, or when they move from elementary to middle, the same address will change, right? They would have, they might have a free bus, they might have to go subscription, but how do they know that?
I'll follow up with Mr. Benedict, and we'll make sure that's clear for all the parents.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pang. Ms. Madigan?
Yeah, I always have something to say. So I was very excited to see, you know, all these grants that we are applying for, and the new grant writer that we just hired this year, so I'm very excited about that. I just had a question. So this says submission of grant, so do we know that we've got it, or are we just submitting it and now we have to wait for?
We need the board to approve some middle of it. Once the board, once it gets approved, then the board has to accept it. So you'll see it again after, after they get approved.
So.
We don't have, we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet, but we will get it.
Correct.
I mean, it's guaranteed once we, okay, great. The other thing I had, just a kind of a suggestion, I know, I think Fal asked about temperature checks. Can we, for the kids going, coming into school, can we ask the parents to take temperature, you know, before they board the bus and kind of have a sign-off on parent portal?
They do, they're going to get a notice before the students come to school, and it's a questionnaire that you have to answer and affirm that your child does not have a temperature.
Okay, and just to be clear, and I know I spoke to Dan about busing on the phone, just to be clear, the students who are remote right now, who do not pay the subscription busing right now, they will have another option to enroll in subscription busing during the next marking period?
Correct.
So it's not like if they don't pay up now, they, they won't get another chance. They will get a chance in the second, second marking period and so on and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
And the money that they're supposed to pay will get, keep getting prorated as such.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's all.
All right.
Well, President?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't realize we're on the open discussions. I have several questions from, from the parents regarding the opening schools, so they cannot be here in person, so I'm just ask them on their behalf if it's okay. So question number one is, does a school nurse have the proper equipment process to address something in the middle of the school day? Basically, what they're saying is, if the kids have a temperature or high or something like that, will the nurse have the kit to do the COVID test?
They do not. We do not do COVID testing in school. I don't know of any school that does it. I know East Brunswick was partnering with the county when I spoke to, I think it's Les Jones. That's not something that's readily available for us at this time. They do not have a COVID screening test in any of our schools.
So I forward you the link from East Brunswick and the county. We are looking, they're providing some tests.
Yeah, I just mentioned that I contacted the county health coordinator, Les Jones, about that, and right now, they don't have the opportunity for us to do that, but we're looking into it.
Okay, so the second question, I'm sorry. If a staff or kid's test positive, is there readmittance protocol in place?
Yes, although, that's been shared with all the administrative team and the procedures for if there's an exposure, whether that's with a student, staff member test positive has been exposed, whether that's in close proximity, whether that's via family or outside event, whether that's due to a travel, self-quarantine, there's protocols established for each one of those. I'm not, is, I'll ask my team, is it on the website currently? I know we shared it with the administrative team. All right, the administrative team has that, but we do have the protocols, and we'll get that out to the people that need to know.
Okay, so third question, a lot of questions. How, how is the substitute situation? I saw we have opposed a lot of long-term substitute. Do we have the substitute, enough substitutes when the teacher is off for whatever reasons?
We're doing the best we can with that. We had probably at the beginning of the week, approximately fifty-eight staff members that requested some type of leave or remote instruction. Dr. Alderelli's been working on that for the last week and a half and going over that and addressing each one individually as we're required to do. And as of now, I think we have all the classes covered. We do have a number of people that have been approved for FMLA, FF-CRA, and the other leaves that are appropriate. And it's going to be a challenge, though, if we have more and more staff members that decide to take a leave at the last minute. I know we had a number that came across emails this afternoon on Thursday, when students are supposed to report back on Monday. We're going to do the best we can. We have a triage program in place on how to cover those classes, but there will be a shortage of subs. That's something that we have to address, and we have a plan to work through that.
Okay, this one is already addressed about testing, temperature check before they enter the bus. The other one is, any kids found COVID positive and may want to return to school after full recovery, the school asking for the, for verification?
Actually, the CDC protocol that was revised this week does not require a negative COVID test to come back, and the reason for that is, someone who's had the COVID nineteen and has been asymptomatic can test positive for up to ninety days. So the protocol from the CDC is they have to have improved their fever-free for forty-eight hours, I believe, and they have to have improved symptoms and well enough to come back, and they've been at least outside that fourteen-day quarantine or ten days of active infection. So the CDC requirements changed this week that you do not require a negative COVID test to come back.
Okay, so the, these two are related. What about school sports and especially in gym, about social distancing? And the other thing is, if the kids are in the gym wearing a face mask for, you know, a period of time is not optimized, is there any alternate plan?
Yeah, the gym as it is right now, as long as we can go out until it gets significantly colder, you know, significant rainfall, the idea is to have the students outside to the greatest extent possible. We're going to spread the students farther apart out in the gym than the normal six-feet of social distancing because of the increased rate and force with of respiration, obviously, while you're exercising will, can make particles, aerosols go a little further. So that's the one thing that we definitely plan to do regarding that. And there are some other activities that we'll do that won't be as rigorous as, you know, playing a full-on soccer game inside or lacrosse or whatever we do, basketball and phys ed, that requires an extreme amount of exertion. We'll try to limit that so there's not as much respiration in such a vigorous manner. I forget the second part of your question, that was the first part.
Well, yeah, the other one is, you know, yeah, what's the alternate plan, because, you know, wearing a mask for, you know, a period, it could not, it's not a ideal. So you answered, you answered that.
Okay.
The, I'm sorry, there's a lot of questions. Will the school nurse available extended hours of latchkey period? And also, there's a question about for the quarantine room, who will be the one who watches these kids when they're in the quarantine room? Will that be a school nurse, or will that be some other healthcare professional, or who will be watching these kids?
Yeah, I think that's two-fold question. The first one is regarding the latchkey program. Our school nurses do not oversee the school latchkey program. They would have their own supports for that time. Regarding the isolation room, which is part of the road back in our plan, we have actually two isolation rooms in each school. Should a student be believed to be symptomatic, they will be escorted to that room, depending on their age, whether it's with a paraprofessional or someone who will wait with the child there, and the nurse will come to that room to evaluate them for, you know, if they are, if they do test positive or they do, are symptomatic, we don't want them coming to the nursing room where a lot of people may come and go with illnesses. So once the nurse makes that determination, the student will remain in the isolation room, and most likely will be guarded with the staff member who's there. We left that up to the building principals to make that delineation on who that is in each building. And then once their parent picks them up, hopefully, they go home and they get tested, they're positive, and there's no issue there. If they do test negative, they will have to be out, as we said, for at least a ten-day period of an active, active case of COVID nineteen until they're symptom-free and they have no fever. I believe it's for forty-eight hours.
Okay, sorry. This is about, the next question is about during lunchtime and during the hallway passes, do we have extra supervision to make sure that kids are wearing the masks?
We don't have extra supervision, but the, one of the reasons why we're coming back in person in a single session period is to ease into things where there isn't a lunch period per se. So the lunch coverage for that, we won't have to worry about. The students are going to get their lunch and breakfast in one, one bag as a grab-and-go methodology. We are using some of our lunch aids, though, for a variety of different reasons, because we don't have lunch, to provide extra supports in the lavatory use at the elementary schools and in the hallways to ensure social distancing and the wearing of masks.
This is, this is again about the, the latchkey program, they received some information. The email does not provide the drop-off time and when then can be picked up. I guess this is probably the rec department's question. I don't know if you have any answer on that.
I would encourage people to contact the recreation department who oversees that. You know, I don't know exactly what those parameters are, especially now, but I know Joyce has been working closely with our administrators and putting that together. So she would have that exact answer, and I'm sure it's school-specific, too, regarding elementary and middle school, what the times would be.
And this one, I actually know the answer, but I want you to ask. What about using bathrooms? Because I saw it on the door. Any special cleaning after each kid? Any limit, how many kids can be in the bathroom? This is the last question, I'm sorry.
It is?
I was just getting warmed up. I don't think we have a protocol in place to clean the lavatory after each use, but there is significantly enhanced regular cleaning that'll take place in much more frequently than we would in a traditional manner. Again, we encourage all the students and staff members to practice good social hygiene to begin with, as well as, we do have the enhanced cleaning that's going to take place in the social distancing, but we don't have the process for four thousand students to have someone actually clean the bathroom after every use.
Okay.
Thank you. Good questions.
This is from the parent. I just have one question for, do we have all the cameras installed in all the classroom ready for Monday?
We do have all the cameras installed. Mr. Barker and his team worked really hard. We tried to get them up and running for September. We did make some adjustments. We triaged with the high schools first because they were the largest number of classes. We actually modified and adjusted some of those on teacher demands, you know, I wouldn't say demands, but teachers wanted some revisions and things to help them more efficient for their particular class. So can I guarantee that every camera will work a hundred percent on Monday? I cannot. But they're there in the classrooms, they're ready to go, and we actually worked with Mr. Barker today about triaging our support staff to make sure everybody, you know, all hands are on deck on Monday morning to provide as much support as we can. I think that a lot of people are going to Lincoln School, right, Ms. Barker?
Do we have enough PPEs for other staff and especially for our parents that they have to do some extra, you know, during this, this time? Do we have disposable gowns for them?
Yeah, we actually received an additional, I think we talked about it at the last board meeting, right, an additional eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars in monies for COVID-related expenses for returning to school. And one of the largest expenditures in that amount was approximately two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, if I got that right, for PPE. So we basically said to every building administrator, as well as any staff member, whatever you need, we will have. Including the higher-end disposable gowns that run between two and three dollars apiece, any type of PPE. The one exception we had was we will not provide the N95 masks, because in order to use them, they have to be fitted by a medical professional, and that's not appropriate. We could get ourselves in a liable position. But we do have the K95s for people that want, as well as these surgical tech, we have as much PPE as anybody wants.
Okay, so the main concern is about the disposable guns, you know, this is truly, once, you know, do we have any limit, how many disposable guns they will be getting?
I want to say we ordered ten thousand.
Yeah.
And we have enough, when I talk to Mr. Collybus and Dr. Conklin, I think we have enough stockpiled for January.
Oh, okay, so whatever they need, they can just go into the stockroom and whatever and grab it.
Correct, and I met with staff, you know, met virtually a little while ago, six-hundred-and-fifty teachers, and I basically told them the same thing, that if you need any PPE, talk to your administrator. If you don't get the answer you want, or you don't get it, you call me directly. We have it, or we'll get it if we don't have it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Ralph, I have one quick question, I'm sorry. I just, so Dr. Bregan, we talked about a survey that will go out to all parents to kind of assess, you know, what we are doing well, what we are not doing well, how we can improve. I just want to get clarity on when that survey will be going out?
It's out already.
Oh, it's out already?
Yeah.
I didn't get that survey.
I'll double-check. It's out, we did it about a day or two after we spoke about it. So I'll double, I didn't look at the results, so I'll double-check those tomorrow, and I'll share.
Okay, yeah, because I don't think, is it, did it go out as an email, or did it go out on parent portal?
I'll double-check. I told them to send it out, they told me it went out. I'm not a parent.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think.
So I'll follow up, and I apologize, because that was about a week ago. So, I'll follow up, and I apologize, because that was about a week ago.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, yeah.
Well, thanks for letting me know, because if it didn't go out, we won't get many results.
Okay. Yes.
Have you received it? Oh, we have a confirmation that.
We got it.
At least once. If it's one, you have a lot.
Ms. Patel.
Are we allowing snack time in elementary school?
It's a really good question. Are we allowing snack time? And we are. It, it has to be done in an appropriate manner, and, you know, some of the students, actually, some of our special needs students use food as reinforcers for behavior, and we have allowed that as well. It has to be done appropriately where students are socially distancing. Right now, they're doing it as much as they can outside in small groups, so we're also going to have reduced number of students in the class, so it's not going to be a school, a group of twenty-five kids having snack at the same time. There'll be small numbers where we could spread them out. But the elementary teachers, as well as administrators, thought it was appropriate and needed to allow snack time.
I would, I would hope that if we can allow snack time, then eventually we could just have lunch in school, too.
That's the plan. One step at a time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You raise a good point, though, Ms. Patel, that, you know, one of the things that we have to overcome when we return, and hopefully, the virus stops spiking and cases don't continue to increase, but there's a psychological barrier for students and staff to get over to come back. Many people haven't been in the building since March. So, our thought was, let's ease people into it. Let's get more acclimated coming to school, and that's why we chose the single session to start. I know if I had my druthers, we'd be here every day, full day, but it's not, it's not okay right now. But I think Mrs. Madiger said earlier, hopefully, you know, in November, we start moving forward, and there's a possibility to do that. It depends on the virus. But we did think it was appropriate to move it slowly, and that's why we, we chose the option we did.
I just have one quick thing. I just want to, you know, congratulate and recognize all the teachers in the district and all the administrators. It is Education Week. They do a great job, especially through this most difficult time. I've never seen teachers or administrators work harder ever in their lives during this, you know, crazy time. It is a lot harder, as Mr. Baker will tell you. It, it is just crazy, but they're doing a fabulous job, and I just wanted to congratulate them. And I don't, I don't want to forget about our support personnel, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, our facilities managers, our maintenance people. I mean, they've been running around crazy, installing cameras, making sure the buildings are clean, making sure everything's up to, you know, getting ready so we could start this process of bringing students back. So, I just want to congratulate everyone throughout the district. Thank you. All right, now, we're going to have public comments. Mr. Damer.
Anthony Damer, fifteen Rodax Circle. Also, I want to mention, they have the thermometer. It's amazing, the technology. God. Never seen that before. I, I first just want to say how disappointed I am regarding the, the tabling of this. The reason why I say it is because those that know the dynamics, what goes on in this town, and the political climate specifically, and many of you do, so shame on you if you did not, you did not go this, to, to, to approve it. I'm very disappointed in that. I'll leave it at that. This is Lincoln School, correct? Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see the numbers. The numbers compared to, I just want to make a comparison, maybe, compared to the bond that was put out, how much is being spent on Lincoln compared to what is being spent here?
I can, I can explain. The original plan was fourteen million.
Fourteen million.
In the original bond, back in whenever, before the pandemic. Right now, we are looking to spend nine million.
Okay.
On more classrooms. We cut out a lot of the bigger principal's office, you know, the fluff, I guess you could call it.
Okay.
Because the principal felt it was more important to have classrooms. So, this will give us more classrooms, a gym, a bigger kitchen, a bigger area. So, we are actually, if you want to look at it, you know, we're cutting back a lot of different things. We're, we're cutting back about five million.
That's fantastic to hear, and thank you for your leadership on that, and Dr. Bragan.
Mrs. Conway.
And Mrs. Conway.
And Dr. Bragan.
Mrs. Conway, thank you. It's important that our, I think, our money goes, our dollar, we get the most for our dollar, and I, I think from here, if we prove, the board proves that it spends the money correctly, you go on from there. This is a big test. I think the town's watching. This is a good first move. We're already saving money. I, listen, forget about the bond, but we're already, compared to what the, where the bond was at, we're, we're getting a little more for our dollar, it sounds like, right now, and that's a, that's, that's a step in the right direction, and considering what we're challenged with, with this virus and everything we're faced, for you guys to, to, to go get this, get this done, good job. Seriously, good job. So, that, that is a positive step, and, and that's all I have for, that's all I have for tonight, I think.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Have a good night. Mr. Johnson. Been sitting here patiently all night. Happy birthday, by the way. I knew it was coming.
But Joey, you're not going to be a hundred.
Oh, no, I know, I know. Well, family, friends, and colleagues, first and foremost, I know she is not here at the moment, but happy birthday to Ms. Evelyn. I do remember her enthusiasm and her excitement during my days at JP, and so I just wish her many, many more happy birthdays. It's always a wonderful time to celebrate a birthday. And next, as Board President Erika previously mentioned, it's also wonderful to see everybody today. It's our first in-person meeting since March, and it's just nice to see everybody in a friendly face. And I hope everybody is safe and healthy during this COVID season. And we looked to, you know, we looked in, we, we look on all of our loved ones during this time, and our relatives during this time. It's a little difficult, especially, you know, if we have relatives who are older. And furthermore, on Monday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty, we recognize our amazing teachers and celebrate their accomplishments with National Teachers Appreciation Day. I just want to give a big shout-out and a huge thank you to all of the teachers, the staff, the administration, for doing their absolute best to educate the students of Edison Township. This two thousand and twenty school year has been extremely challenging. However, they have showed that they are up for the task, and so, we just thank you for all that you do and all that you guys continue to do. And lastly, I'm not really sure, nor am I really interested in the foundational roots that sparked the conversation or discussion around Dr. Bragan's contract, but I can attest to the experiences that I've had so far, and I can stand firm and say, Dr. Bragan, along with Assistant Superintendent Ms. Gail Polakowski, they're, they're definitely a dynamic duo. I'm not one to really, like, jump on sides or anything like that, but I know that we are extremely blessed to have you guys all as leaders, and you guys are really guiding us in the right direction. They have been open and receptive since really the beginning, and I, I, Dr. Bragan has emailed me at ten AM or at three AM or, you know, ten PM. It really doesn't matter, as long as he's gotten back to us.
I, I have no life, Joe.
Say it again?
I have no life.
Three AM, you got to cut back on that one.
That's why I charged my phone downstairs.
And I'm, I'll wake up, and I was like, have three emails at four AM, and I'm like, okay, hey. So, and just to conclude, crisis and adversity reveals the essence of men, and so, Dr. Bragan, as long, as well as Assistant Superintendent Ms. Gail Polakowski, they have really showed the type of person that they are. And so, during this COVID-19, when everything is sporadic and all over the place, it is nice to have someone that can just stand firm and answer the questions that are needed. And so, thank you for your time, and I hope you guys remain safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You're a great young man. Thank you. Mr. De Pasquale.
Tony De Pasquale, upon Street. So, last night at the council meeting, I addressed the issue of Stelton School with the business administrator, and the response back from the business administrator was that the school district was not interested in Stelton School anymore, which kind of surprised me. And I, 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 you know, said, really? And she said, well, we're looking for the other avenues of use for, for that. And that, that just shocked me. So, I was wondering if we can get some clarity on the, on that, if, if that's really the reasoning, or is there confusion between the school district and the council?
Board President Erika, can I, can I weigh in on that? Thank you, Tony, and you were one of a few people who contacted me last night and basically said that acronym WTF? I wasn't really sure what that meant. But I had a conversation today with Maureen, and we were in conversations, at, the board has asked me to look into all options, and we were in conversations through March and talking about, you know, what does it mean, what, what would it entail to renovate that school and make it, whether it's a kindergarten, an elementary school, or whatever use it could possibly be. And when COVID hit, that conversation just kind of stopped, you know, and it didn't mean we weren't interested, it didn't mean that we weren't still in the conversation, it just wasn't as an inappropriate time to really talk about it. So, we had a great conversation today. One of the problems, as you know, with that property, it's on the, the Rossi, right, a registered site for open spaces, and there's a duration of time that that would take to get off that. So, I, I asked her if it was appropriate for us to meet and continue that conversation for two things. Let our people get in there, whether it's somebody from our architectural firm, and take a look at what it would really take.
Right.
To renovate that building. You know, the inside of that building does need renovation to be used currently to get up to code and things. And she's open and willing to do that, and then we have to look at what would it take from their, on their perspective, from their side, to get it off that Rossi stature? Or can we still use it on that stature if we donate other lands?
Right.
So, we had a great conversation, and so, we are still in that conversation. I also spoke to Mayor Lanky about the same thing, and he was a hundred percent supportive, too. So, we're going to schedule a meeting. They're going to look at their schedules and get in touch with us. We're also looking at the property. I don't know how many people are aware, at the end of Truman, sealed National Guard Base. I know there's been some issues there about, you know, I don't know if it's contaminated. I don't know anything about it.
Sure.
But it's worth looking at and assessing and taking a, a strong look on, you know, the properties that are there, if they can help us with their overcrowding, because as everybody knows, once we get over the pandemic, that didn't go away. We have thirteen hundred students in the, in the, in the grade levels in the elementary as you progress through, and they need space.
Right. No, it's great. You know, because one, one of the other comments that was made was, well, it's going to take time to, you know, it could take five years if we did do anything. My point was, well, if we started doing something five years ago, then we'd be.
We'd be in there now.
So, let's do something. And I also expressed to, to the council last night that, that, you know, this overcrowding issue is not just a Board of Education issue, because I hear, well, the Board of Education gets all the tax, most of the tax money from the, okay, yeah, I get that. But we also have planning boards, we have the council, we have, like, we need to look at this overcrowding, not as a school district issue. It needs to be a community issue, as I said last night, COVID. Everybody is working on COVID. Everybody is taking their part. Why can't we do that with the overcrowding? Why do we need to have these compartmentalized thinking of, well, the Board of Education, they're the ones who, and, and I said, you know, back to the council, I said, you know, if the Board of Education says to, to the council or to the planning boards, well, no, we don't want your help, I said, well, then, I'm going to address the Board of Education on why they would even say that. I'm not saying anybody has, but I, I'm just saying that we need to work together. It is a talent issue. The students are affected by this, and I know everybody says this, but it's true. The students are the future leaders, and we need to be careful and make sure that we're providing what these stu, students are getting, because it affects us as taxpayers, it affects us in our home values, because if our schools are not, you know, there's not enough room for them, it just, it's a, there's just a lot of negativity of who should take care of this, who should take care of that. Why can't we just all come together? And I know it's, you know, being happy together is, is something that everybody wants to do, but I'm just saying, okay, we don't have to be happy together, but let's work together. That, that's what we need to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Yeah, we are still working with the council, obviously. I know some of us have conversations with council members all the time. I know Mr. Brescher and Mr. Deal, Mr. Joshi, a few others, you know, we've all want to be in this together to solve this issue. Oh, wait a minute. Mrs. White, I see you now. Tough to recognize people with masks. Come on down, Mrs. White. You can take that off when you speak, if you like.
I just can't resist.
I know.
But I do want to say thank you.
Name and address.
For Stelton School. You know, I've been after Stelton School for years.
Mrs. White, real quick, name and address, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Virginia White, eleven Church Street.
Perfect.
Edison.
Thank you.
I have been after that for the longest time, you know, that's true, Dan. And, you know, I did check, and I know that's a swap, because it is green acres, and if we could just change things, but you're on the right path. Good for you.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Such a good move.
All right, great. Thank you. Mr. Pandya.
We may run out of wipes.
Yeah. We need more wipes.
Good evening, everyone. Yash Pandya, twenty Arbor Circle. Let go of few things tonight. Many of the folks have previously said, very happy and excited to see everyone here tonight, especially to celebrate Ms. Evelyn's hundredth birthday. And the second piece I'd like to share is a big congratulations to Superintendent Dr. Bernard Bragan and Board President Mr. Ralph Erika for taking forward, along with the rest of the board members, for taking forward this big initiative of Lincoln School. The community members, as well as the students, parents, and teachers, I'm sure, are very motivated to see these improvements in our school district, and I think it's just another step forward and motivation to see and bring these improvements to our other schools in the district as well. For example, JP Stevens is one of our possible next areas where we can bring these kind of improvements to. So, I'm very happy to see this personally, because I used to play basketball here, part of ETYB, and I remember how it used to be back then, and, I mean, over time, things, it's a building, it starts to deteriorate, so I'm very happy to see this improvement going forward, and very excited that students who were once, when I was their age once, are able to enjoy these accomplishments and positive resources that are getting passed forward. So, congratulations to everyone here, and thank you for all the work that you guys do. Have a good evening.
I, I just want to make it very clear that Mrs. Conway has been on this for, since she's been on the board, and since she's been on the facilities team, she led the team to this Lincoln project by contacting Dr. Bragan, getting the architect with certain plans and giving us options. So, again, I, I don't want to be congratulated on part of the committee, but under the leadership of Mrs. Conway, she's the one that got it done.
Congratulations, Ms. Conway, to you as well, specifically.
Congratulations to the district.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kregel. Oh, sorry. You're next, then. Come, come on up closer, so I can see you, I get blocked.
Ernest Kregel, Edison, New Jersey. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but just listening to everything and taking it all in, I thank all of you for the Lincoln School improvements, and I just want to say one thing. I don't, I'm not on one side or the other, but the argument not to vote for the two-year extension for Dr. Bragan because of the safety and the situation with the coronavirus, to me, almost you can flip it the other way. He hasn't had a fair chance. He hasn't had two years of, let's give him, because of the situation, he hasn't had the regular scenario that other superintendents had. They haven't had to face coronavirus. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, maybe he deserves two more years for, under regular, under a regular scenario, because he hasn't been able to work under a regular scenario. I hope that, did that make sense? Sorry, could you come out the right way? But I could see, you know, two more years, because he hasn't had two, two normal years. He's had two abnormal years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we paying Maria tonight for all her work here?
She's put on the payroll. We're going to vote on that.
Maria, when's your hundredth birthday? We'll plan a party for you.
Good evening, Dr. Bragan and board members. Padma Chintam from Springbrook Drive. I want to first note, I'm so glad to hear the conversation about the Stelton School has finally started, it's, or started or revisited or whatever it is, so I'm really glad to hear that, also happy to note the plan for Lincoln School. I have one question about remote learning. I would like to get some more clarity on exams and tests and connectivity issues. As we all know, the internet connectivity is not predictable, and I want to know what happens when there is a test or an exam a student has to take, and there is connectivity, they're logging in either two minutes or five minutes late. Are they allowed to, do they get extra time at the end, or do they, if they are not able to log in at all, can they retake the test? Just some clarity on that would be good to have.
The specificity, specificity of that question hasn't really gotten to me, but my expectation would be that the teachers and the supervisors work with the students should that happen, and if they're worried about the test content being compromised, because the student logged in late or couldn't access it, there'd be some type of different test that they can make up. But I do not believe any of our teachers would hold a student accountable for a connectivity issue or a technology issue in the same way that we wouldn't hold one of ourselves accountable should that happen. If it's an ongoing issue with connectivity, which we have addressed, I know the, Mr. Barker's office for Chief Technology Officer has handed out numerous hotspots and things like that for students that legitimately can't have, get on and have access. So, I would expect flexibility in that situation, so that we wouldn't penalize the child and still keep that test security, which is sometimes a concern with some of our more competitive high school classes.
Thank you. Is there a guideline in place for that?
There should be, with guidance, as well as with our, our departments, but we can look into that and get back to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maria Wise, 33 Parch Place. Couple things I wanted to say. First, I want to say thank you for taking the steps to improve Lincoln School. I think a lot of parents and teachers and students appreciate that. And also, thank you, and please, can we continue our conversations with the Stelton Rec Center? I think that's something that a lot of people have been fighting for, for a long time in this town. And I'm really happy to hear that you've been able to even have the conversation with the administration in this town, so I think that speaks volumes. Thank you. We really need that. Couple things. Dan, this question's for you, actually. There's been a lot of discussions back and forth in the town, and I just want, you know, the board's finances better than anyone, so that's why this is directed towards you. In regards to taxes and tax increases, would it be possible to have a 0% tax increase without taking... I'm a taxpayer, so I'm all for not raising my taxes by any means necessary. Would it be possible to do this without taking away from our teachers or from projects, current programs, or in addition to our mental health programs?
I would find it very difficult to go into zero when we gave, when we just settle with the teachers and the increases on all of the staff, not just the teachers, but all the staff, is gonna exceed $4 million, just that alone.
Okay.
Then I'm expecting the increase in our health to be somewhere in the, if it's 5%, it's gonna be $2 million, so that'd be $6 million.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Is there a way around it? If we get cut in state aid, what happens then?
Right.
We gotta put it back on the taxpayers because the state aid, you have to request from somewhere.
Right. Okay. Another thing I wanted to say was regarding Dr. Bragan, and I don't want to keep rehashing this conversation, but I just felt like, I know it's an important conversation to have. His contract, obviously, is a very important topic to be discussing right now. I think the children going back into school should be, obviously, priority number one. That being said, that takes place Monday. I think, once that's done, we need to then immediately start looking into having the conversation once the kids are back in school. I think Beth Maroney is right, it is a conversation that needs to be had, you're 100% correct. So, I did just want to clarify when I said table the conversation, I didn't mean table it like forever, obviously. I just wanted the kids in school first. But I think, you heard the room tonight, most of them are gone now. But you heard the parents, and parents themselves, not just people that are coming trying to make a name for themselves, not people that are looking for kudos from this person or that person. The people of the town are speaking volumes, and they're coming out of their homes to speak on behalf of somebody for a reason, you know? Not just because they like the guy, but he literally has their children in the palm of his hand, and he's taking care of them. So, and the reason I'm saying that is, I just want you, as a board, to please keep that in mind, that you are a board of education, and the children's education should be the first priority. So, please, I know we've tabled it for the evening. I'd like to see the kids priority number one, but obviously, you know, we, I say this all the time, we can't have a school without teachers, and, you know, we can't run a school without a superintendent. And we've done that before, and we've tried it before, and quite frankly, it didn't work out so great for us. So, I don't want to see us return to that. So, just please keep that in mind moving forward. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph, I'd like to make a comment if I can.
Sure.
Maria, back when Dr. Healan was the president of the board, and I was the vice president of the board, we had many conversations with Dr. O'Malley in which we said to him, "The community is missing you, we're missing you at football games, we're missing you at, you know, cross-country meets for the younger students, we're missing you at band concerts." You know, there is so much going on, and you don't have to go to everything, but can't you show up once in a while? And his answer was, "Well, you know, if I go to one, then I'm cheating the others for not going to that." And I just, I grew up in a school district that had very intimate superintendents who used to come and sit in all the stands and all the games and all the, you know, concerts and everything together with the principal, and it was very close. It's very important for the superintendent to show his or her face in the community. You know, and Mr. Bragan, having grown up in Edison, understands that because I'm sure he would have loved for his principal to be there watching him, you know, in whatever sport that he was competing. And this is vitally important to the community. And Dr. Bragan has done things like go to children's homes to deliver, you know, machines to them when the machines break down, deliver food to the kids. There's so much that he does that people don't know, because he's not a bragger. So, I agree with you that that visibility in the community is one of the primary things that we were looking for when we did our search. So, thank you for acknowledging that.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close this public portion? Maybe you don't have to do that, Ms. White. All right. Oh, sorry, Ms. Baker again.
I just spoke too fast.
Did you really have to talk tonight? Were you too busy wiping?
Good evening again, Brett Baker, 140 Grandview Avenue. I remember a couple of years ago over at the Ed Center saying, you know, we needed to be careful as a board because children were listening. And I just want to say tonight, this meeting just was phenomenal. This is the type of meeting that I hope our kids get a chance to watch, that I hope our residents get a chance to watch. I think just the energy was phenomenal. I do think Dr. Bragan, like, to what everybody said, and first off, just the fact your name has been said so much tonight, Bravo for being on the stand so much, but just your responses to the questions, the speed with which you responded, true leadership. I think the speed with which you responded to last night's comments at Town Council meeting related to Stelton and other properties, picking up the phone, being proactive, giving the business administrator of the town a call, like, that's what we've needed for my superintendent for years. And Ms. Maroney, I think to your point on the previous superintendent you were speaking about, exactly. Like, that's sort of, that's what we need. We need that energy and we need that motivation. So, again, just a huge thank you to you and for the swift leadership for that. Again, echoing a sincere thank you to our facilities team, our admin team, the teachers and the staff, for just all of their work to get our buildings ready. I know I've been nervous, but just sitting in the room tonight, hearing the answers and the prep that's gone into it, I do feel confident that we are on the right path. A couple of questions, just on the stuff that proposed, just in advance of next week's meeting. The plan for Lincoln, which first off, Bravo, congratulations on moving on it. How does the money process work? Because I heard we're not breaking ground until, like, later, so I'm just like curious just how that money works. It seems like we've got a lot of really great motions, but just curious how it works. Speaking of money, Dan, these bus routes, just, did I read you've got a 5% reduction on some of these routes?
An increase, it's a small increase, it's smaller than I thought.
One of these says reduction, though. Is the note on page, on the bid, it says the Durham School Services rates reflect a 5% reduction?
Yeah, Durham was giving us a 3% discount if they won all their 42 routes. And they did, they were low on all of them, so we took the 3% off and we're awarding it at 3% less.
That's phenomenal. Like, in this day and age, I think with what's going on, just huge phenomenal work on that. Not to bounce all over the place, realize I was back on Lincoln. Curious, just in advance of next week, if we don't have it, I can't read in the font. I'm just wondering, of the $9 million on this option two, how much of that is contingency? I'm just curious what's baked into there. The meal services, I think it's awesome that the USDA has extended the free food program through the end of the academic school year. And just curious, I know currently, meal service is based on like a daily kind of, you choose your menu, you pick it up on Monday, for Monday, you choose for Tuesday, you pick up on Tuesday. Just wondering, has the district considered doing some sort of like bulk pickup, order for three days of the week, pick up at one time just to try and limit the number of pickups? And then, just to re-jump on the Dr. Bragan, sorry, the notes are all over the place, guys, sorry. Really appreciate your statement you made, Dr. Bragan, around the psychological impact of returning to the building for the first time since March. We know the mental health of our students and our staff is very, very critically important and grateful. The mental health is at the forefront of these decisions. And just a little bit of a toss, just curious if the district is beginning to make plans. I know vaping was a big concern over the last couple of years, continues to be a concern. We all know that Proposition 1 is on the ballot for November. Just curious what steps the district is taking in relation to Proposition 1 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did lunch pick up from breakfast, is there consideration of one, or once a week, or...
That's come up with a few parents having multiple meals, multiple days' meals at one point. Initially, Chartwell's wanted to have, you know, fresher meals and provide them every day. And that's why they didn't do that, and we encouraged them to do it more regularly, to have fresher food. But it has come up with a few parents, so we'll take a look at that, if that's a better option for them. It would be different food, right? Because it has to have a three-day shelf life as opposed to a day or, you know, less than 24 hours. So, we'll look into that. That's come up.
As far as vaping and Proposition 1, I think we will have to, depending on the outcome of the election, take a look at our policies and update them. And I know Mrs. Patel would do that after the election on November 3rd. So, if we know by November 3rd, you know, I'm hearing we won't know results until December, January, so... But, yeah, we would definitely have to look at our policies within our schools and our school system on any kind of vaping in Proposition 1 if that becomes legal.
Dan, the process of Lincoln School.
The funding for Lincoln School. Okay, first of all, the state requires us to have a 5% contingency built in. I anticipate, I haven't seen the numbers yet from USAQ Architects, but I know in the past, they've usually go with 10% contingency, because you never know what's gonna come up when you start digging in the ground. When it comes to the funding, even though we're not gonna break ground until September, I mean, not until the summer, which should probably be in July, we have to award the bid before that and give them time to get ready. And if you ever heard Mrs. Conway's commuter report, we're anticipating bidding this in March. It's gotta be out there for something this big, it's gotta be out there for at least a month. So, we're anticipating awarding it in May. However, I can't award it unless I have the funding in place to award it. If we have $6 million in our capital outlay and it comes in at nine, I have to have the board approve at the next board meeting appropriation of $3 million out of our capital reserve to cover it. And then, it'll carry, because we will pay for anything until we get started, but that money will be encumbered, and it'll carry as accounts payable, you know, for the next year or two, whatever it takes to get that thing done. And it'll stay in our account, and we'll still get interest on it until we pay it.
I think that was everything, right, Mr. Baker? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We skipped one thing, board members, I'm sorry. On number seven, I think it's item two, right, the bid for bus transportation?
Yes.
We have to approve that tonight, so Dan could award the bids to the bus companies so we are ready for Monday. So, if I can get a motion, Mrs. Conway, Ms. Patel?
Okay, this is the vote for, to award the bid, the transportation bid?
Yes, the bus contracts.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky? Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel? Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, now we're gonna adjourn to privileged session. We need to read, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm making, not making the motion.
Oh, I gotta read it first.
Oh, right, wait, then I make a motion.
Okay. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, except the 231 Public Laws of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances present exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Town of Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding student matters, bus contracts, litigation brought on by former employees and students, ETA grievances, perk unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leave of offices, changes of status, longevity, bus drivers and bus aides, salary adjustments, Title I annual school planning meeting, Title I funded after-school tutoring, co-curricular appointments, co-curricular changes, substitutes, coaching appointments, and authorization to approve, request for extended health benefits. Three, it is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matter, if such time is in, the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
All right, now a motion, Ms. Maroney. Motion, Ms. Maroney, and Mr. Shi.
Mrs. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroney?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Eriko?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All right, we're gonna go into closed session. We will not be coming out and taking any action. Thank you. Have a good night.